Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Yeah.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janet Scott Abier.
Yeah.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Here.
Public hearing, number one, in order to accept a street dedication request by Susan Kuzan of a 0.10A proportion for Horton Drive right-of-way being 20.50 by 173.31, in accordance with survey by WMJ Bowden Jr. dated May 15, 2018, Zone RS 11A, recommended approval by planning commission, Cyril Gagné.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Cyril Gagné, building official, City of Hammond. This is a dedication of a piece of property that actually goes to the center of the street. And in order for us to proceed, as we usually do, we ask the landowners when they're trying to subdivide or redo their flats, to go ahead and dedicate a portion of the street right-of-way back to the city. And this is what this pertains to.
Number two, in order to rezone 17.5 acres, being the proposed Covington Ridge subdivision from RS 8 to a planned development request by Landrick Real Estate LLC, in accordance with zoning map by McLenn Taylor Inc. dated May 14, 2018, located at 6O Covington Highway, recommend approval by zoning commission.
This is a piece of property that was annexed into the city at R8 zoning, and they have requested to do a development that they will have all the guidelines written for. And basically, that's what it involves. They're taking a piece of property that's already been annexed into the city and changing the zoning to a PUD.
I have one question, Mr. President. For the PUD, are we required to have the actual layout of the plan for the PUD? Is that something that's been submitted to?
No, this is just, tonight is only the rezoning from R8 to that. All of that is, will be forthcoming.
Okay, so we're just approving this?
The change of the zoning.
And is that not predicated based on the design of the plan? Or is the plan?
No, in other words, they have met all the guidelines for it.
Okay.
Coming forward to this point, they have to go back and completely design it around that set of guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
And that will all come to you all.
But does the zoning board then approve their plan?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
CC, if I remember correctly, they have not yet approved the subdivision, and then they haven't approved the PUD, correct?
Right, none of that has been done, okay? That is all forthcoming.
Any questions?
Where is 6O Covington Highway?
Adjacent to Forbes Farm. Are you familiar with Old Covington Highway?
Yes.
It's just to the east of Forbes Farm.
I think it fronts on, there's a front on, the subdivision fronts on which street?
On Old Covington.
Number three, in order for an expanded conditional use request by the Nightcap Billiards and Eatery to allow sale of alcohol in conjunction with a billiards hall located at 42309 South Morrison Boulevard, Suite B, in accordance with the site plan dated May 11, 2018, Zone CH recommend approval with the following conditions by zoning commission, A, this approval is with the understanding will expire upon change in occupancy or ownership from the Nightcap Billiards and Eatery, and B, the approval is only for Suite B acting as a billiard hall.
Any questions? Because we went through this last time and...
Any questions?
Number four, in order to adopt the City of Hammond budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019, in accordance with the procedure set within Section 5-03 of the City of Hammond Charter, Lacy Landrum.
We have several items that have been discussed since the original budget was proposed. These were all linked up to the agenda. The first item is the mayor and directors and recreation program departments. We need an additional $63,438 there to correct formula errors that were in the two department budgets. They showed all the people properly, they showed all their amounts, including their health care, their taxes, everything else. It's just in the total, that last person on both of those lines was not included, and so that total was inaccurate. So that's one correction that we would ask to be made. The second correction revolves around the police departments and their retirement. We received on May 10 notification from the state that the police retirement system, the employer contribution was increasing from 30.75% to 32.25%, and we had just introduced the budget a couple of days prior. So that was added in. That total amount of that shift is $74,409, and that is required to the police retirement system. The third change that's proposed is to council District 2 in the council budget, just to increase by $1,500 to cover conference travel. The fourth proposed is due to, this came from a request from the council, to increase the budget going to the African American Heritage Museum by $10,000 to move a research project that the city had been coordinating over to the museum to coordinate to hire a genealogist. The last one that is proposed that was brought up by the council was an increase of $25,000 to the Marshals Office to help cover expenses. With that said, our new ending fund balance in the general fund, after all the expenses and everything comes through, would still be over $2 million there for our reserve. And the new ending fund balance on the sales tax, if we approve all of these requests, would be $144,664. I would also like to draw the council's attention to, in the five-year capital improvements plan, the fund for the DEQ Clean Water State revolving loan fund program were included in anticipation of that .95 interest loan coming through. That's the additional pond that we were planning to build at the sewer treatment plant, and that upgrade was proposed to meet our new permit limits once they are issued. That project is on hold, pending an attorney general's opinion of how the city will participate in the state loan programs and whether that loan is considered bonded debt. So that was never supposed to, I mean, that was never going to be any sales tax dollars or whatnot, but that column is on hold. There's no funds, basically, out there.
Can you give me a further explanation why that's on hold again?
We're seeking an attorney general's opinion to find out how the city participates in the state loan programs and whether that loan is considered bonded debt.
So is it not a bonded debt through the process?
We're seeking an attorney general's opinion about how the city participates in state loan programs and whether that loan is considered bonded debt.
So the $2 million, so what we're referring to, and I pass some of these to the audience on page number one, under SWRF funds, $2,000, $2,850, those funds that are in the budget to pay for the project are not approved at this point. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, and that's why that footnote was always there all along.
I mean, I'm just...
And that's why we had gone to the...
Yeah, I'm just being transparent.
Right.
I'm just trying to help the audience understand, those who have a report.
Right, it was listed as loan funds in there.
Right, I see that.
Yeah.
I see that. And that's through the, and that's a 20-year loan as well?
That is a 20-year loan, yes. It's .95 interest.
Right. I think it's .45 in interest and .5 in admin fee.
That's what I was about to say, yes.
Right, thanks. That's my question, thanks.
Mr. President, I would like to discuss two items that have been requested to be added. The first one is $10,000 for a tangible African American museum. I think all of us have received emails from Shauna Seal, she couldn't be here tonight. That project that is being proposed to be, as best I can explain it, will be basically taken away from people who have started and worked up until this point to move it to the museum. And admittedly, I only know what I've received from Shauna, but it looks like we're going to be taking a project that is already underway, that's already had a presentation at the cemetery for the unknown slave boy, and we're going to be removing that and taking it and putting it into an organization that had an opportunity to participate but chose not to. And if I'm misspeaking, I apologize, but that's what I understand. So I'd like the council to consider removing that $10,000.
Mr. President, I could talk to that if you want me to. I think that originally, the mayor decided, I think earlier in the year, that the city would engage in the project of identifying the enslaved African that's buried on East St. Charles Street next to Peter Hammond. And during the time, we participated through a process with different people coming to the meetings, and it was decided to give that project to the historic district to manage. And I think Shauna is a member of the board for the historic district, and so that project has been in that area. And I had a chance to participate in a couple of the meetings, and one of the concerns that we had is the volume, the volume of the work required to do this job. My concern was that we did not have the expertise through a volunteer perspective to get the work done. And I think during the work hearing, the workshop hearing, Councilman Williams, Lacy agreed that she would, there was not an issue with the funding, it was more of an issue with where the money would go. Is that what we said in the meeting?
I suggested that we be able to continue the city's project, which the city had established an entire website and had led several public meetings in accordance for, and that we could put that money instead. The $10,000 could go into the consultant line item of general administration rather than being transferred to the museum.
Right, and that's exactly what you said, and that's what I was saying. So it was never an issue with the funding. So my question was, if the African American Heritage Museum is the museum in our community that focuses on preserving African American history, and the city was already agreeing to move to use $10,000 for consulting fees, it would make sense to me that the African American Heritage Museum would be engaged a part of that project? And in the RFP, which the city would assist in preparing it, would clearly identify how those funds are going to be spent, but we would just be bringing the African American Heritage Museum into the conversation, which I think is very, very appropriate. If we're funding them, funding the museum to do the work through other funding sources, it only makes sense to me that that would be the organization that would be doing the work versus the historic district, which is responsible for preserving residential structures, both commercial and residential, in the City of Hammond, not focusing on doing the work. And lastly, the need for a genealogist would probably be very appropriate to do the work that I think would need to be done. So that was the reason why we did that. Now, that doesn't exclude the city from participating in that process, and Shauna also participating. It would just be a matter of the RFP would be organized so we can engage the African American Heritage Museum staff and hopefully get them to become even more relevant in the city. That was the purpose of doing this. So there was never a request of that funding, it was a matter of whether we engaged the African American Heritage Museum or not. And I chose to suggest that we engage them.
So two follow-up questions, Mr. President. One is, did the committee ask or indicate that they needed help in completing this project? And two, did, and again, just information that's been shared with me, is that the museum may have had an opportunity to participate at the beginning and chose not to?
Well, I can answer both those questions, Councilman Williams, I'm more than happy to. First, I think that the museum is definitely capable of participating in the process. I don't think they were, I'm not sure if they were engaged to be a part of the process. I know that I, when I was president of the council, I requested to be engaged in some of the projects, and I was denied participation as an individual councilman. So I'm not sure.
Which projects were you denied involvement in? From the city or from the museum?
No, no, the initial rollout of the event. But that's not the point I'm trying to make, I'm just answering your question. And it's my, I'm just responding to your question.
Sure.
So, and the first question was?
Did the committee indicate that they needed help completing the work?
Well, so, so that was...
Or that they are capable of completing the work?
It's my opinion, after being on the committee, that the work would be better done with a genealogist because of the nature of the work that's being done. This is history that we're talking about. We're not, this isn't, you know, you have the historic district that's responsible for residential and commercial building management. This is, we're talking about, and it was the mayor's idea, to focus on documenting the history of the enslaved African on East Charles Street. So if we're doing that type of work, in most cases, those type of jobs require a genealogist to participate. And so with that in mind, I thought that when I saw the work that was being done, I felt like it would be to the advantage of the city, if that was the goal, to hire a professional person to get the work done. That was my opinion.
Okay, my opinion is if we're going to dedicate $10,000, less dedicated to the committee that's already started working, and if they need to hire a genealogist, then they can, I think they're capable of spending that money, and they've already shown their capabilities of getting work done because there's already been work done.
And without going too long, Councilman Williams, you know, if we have that entity in our community, if, you know, we have a legitimate organization that the council and the city supports and funds, you would think that if we have that type of organization in the community, that we would appropriately put those type of tasks on them to do, because we fund them for that purpose, that's what they can do. So that's just my opinion. I, you know, and I'm only one person, but that's how I saw it.
Andre, would this be the time if I wanted to make a motion to remove that from the budget to do that, or should we wait?
Well, at some level, the council's going to have to decide if you take these up one by one, which you may want to do.
Would that be done now or at the end of the meeting?
Well, you can make whatever motion if there's time for discussion.
As the president of the council, I'd like to vote.
One by one on one.
The question is, vote now during the public hearing or vote later when?
Later, at the time, yeah. You don't take a vote now, this is a public, this is the public hearing, but at the time for the vote, you'll have a decision whether you take them one by one.
Mr. President, can we see if there's any public comment?
Dr. Louise Bostick, 112 Elm Drive in Hammond. And I've been involved with this project since its onset, and I know Shauna very well and have kept up with her progress. She's done an inordinate amount of work and research, and she's extremely competent, as is that historical committee that we have. And this, it seems a little bit insulting maybe to suddenly want to take this away from Shauna and put it in the hands of those who have chosen not to participate in the past. And it really, I don't understand, it's a small funding, and she certainly could use this, but it seems the historical society's been doing a really good job, and that they should be able to continue that. And I don't understand why you want to take it from her and put it in the, give the authority and the funds to someone who has actually considered it a city project and not an African American Heritage Museum project.
Right, and I can answer that for you if you want to respond to that, Louise.
I think, I think I understand your position, Lamar, and I just wanted to express my opinion, and I don't really need argumentation. Thank you very much.
Okay, so again, Mr. President, it's not, you know, it's not a matter of Shauna, like anybody else, can always fill out, apply through the RFP, and if she is qualified to do the work. Currently, this is a volunteer process, and again, you know, without going long on it, this is a serious part of our history, and documenting it properly, I think is critical, and having the proper people to do that would be important, so that's why we're suggesting that.
So, Mr. President, the $10,000 is really just going to be facilitated by the African American Museum?
You're exact.
Because the genealogist, who's already part of this group, a local one, from north into the parish, could very well be the one doing the job of this work.
You're exactly right.
So why wouldn't you just continue it with the committee?
Well, we would have to just do the RFP through the process, because it engages them, Mr. Mayor, and I think it's important that we bring them into the conversation, because I think for the long-term viability of that organization, we're going to continue to fund them. I think they need to be as responsible for this work.
I think the end result is that they will be the benefactor of what happens here.
Okay, I appreciate your comments.
Anyone else want to speak on, in order?
Mr. President, my second thing I want to discuss is the $25,000 for the Marshals Office. I think anybody that's been paying attention to the news and newspaper knows that there's a state law that just increased the fees for the Marshals Office that they can collect, I think from $18 to $30 or $32 per incident. I did ask at our budget session what that would mean for the Marshals Office, they indicated that it could mean up to an additional $160,000 a year going directly to the Marshals Office. So my question, is anybody here from the Marshals Office, first of all? If there is, I would love to speak to them. If not, my question then would be, why do you still need the $25,000 from the city? So I respectfully ask that council would consider removing that $25,000 from the budget as well.
So is there somebody here from the Marshals Office? So has that been, Councilman Williams, has that been, that's been approved? So that's guaranteed that they're going to be receiving those funds?
As far as I know, it's approved. And my motion can be contingent on, if for some reason the governor doesn't sign it, then, you know, that's fine.
I think that's fair.
But if they get the additional funds, then I don't think they need the funds from us. So I don't know how my motion would look, but I'll make it at the appropriate time.
That sounds prepared to me. Anyone want to speak on, in order?
Well, we got it.
Hi, Debbie Norwood, 39329 West Brickyard Road, Springfield. As y'all know, on April 3, 2018, was my second request for public records from the Marshals Office. During that, when I received that request, I realized that the Marshals Office has in its general fund to date, on April 3, excuse me, April 3, 2018, they have in their general House Bill 315 was passed, was put into the legislature by Robbie Carter, and House Bill 315 was signed by the governor, and it will go into effect, raising his civil fees from 15, I think it was 8, 10, 15, to $30. So every civil paper now that is served through the Marshals Office, they will receive $30. So this is going to be a significant increase. So I would like to ask you to remove the $25,000 also. And while I'm working on getting the, at the same time this bill was introduced, the, let me back up one, I also received a list of CDs that the Marshals Office has. So right now, they have $460,484.99 at their disposal. So why are we asking the council for $25,000 when this money could be used for other things that the city has, shortfalls that the city may have? The second thing I'd like to bring up to you is, Mr. Lamar, I believe in 2017, he requested $25,000 for raises. The only person that received a raise when y'all agreed to give the $25,000 was Ms. Carrie Belata. This is paperwork from his office showing a $5,000 raise. Ms. Javale Williams was moved from part-time to full-time, she therefore received $3,892. This raise was not given to every employee of the Marshals Office. You're welcome to go back and check, you know, my request, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention in case you weren't aware, because you were promised one thing and it was not delivered. Right now, the marshal's salary stands, when it's brought back, Representative Muscarrella has already submitted a bill, and it is going to come before the regular session to bring the salary back, the salary cap back for the Marshals Office to $111,585 a year. This averages out to $9,798 a month. We have seniors in this parish that do not get $9,798 a month. So I really believe that this office can run on the money that they have now. And in case they can't, at the same public records request, I requested the units for the Marshals Office.
Automobile units?
Automobile, yes, yeah, there are units. And the reason I did this, because there's three laws on the books, that you must be post-certified in order to drive these, take these units home. Right now, these units are being taken home by 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, eight persons, eight employees of the Marshals Office. There are only three that are post-certified employees that by law can take these home. So therefore, this would save money by us not having maintenance and gas and everything else on these units. And the second thing that we need to address, and I will follow up with, is the units must be marked. They must have a decal on the side and be marked. Therefore, they can't be used for just everyday purposes. So I would just request that with the information that I have, and I will share it with you if you need, that we withdraw the $25,000 from the Marshals Office and let them use the money that they have on hand. Thank you.
Anyone else?
On the marshal thing?
None.
Not on that?
That's all, Mr. President, thank you.
Number five?
We're not finished, we have more things on the budget to talk about, and Councilman Hood's not back yet, so I don't know. There's a couple of things, Mr. President, I submitted to you, and I also gave the audience some information so if they wanted to follow along, they could. On page number six, which the audience has, under the capitals project plan, and just for the record, you know, we moved these projects to the 2018. At one point, when we made a proposal at the last meeting, the plan was to move the 2018, 2019 capital projects into the proposed bond, which had the bond at $14 million. And knowing that the bond conversation is more complicated than we initially thought, it was obviously advisable that we move those 2018, 2019 projects back to the current, you know, for our funding so we could approve that. In addition, on line number 20, we are requesting that we add the Hazel Street Canal project, which is $210,000, and we would use $110,000 from the sales tax ending balance, and we would use $100,000 from the general fund ending balance to include that project. That's a recommendation from Councilman Hood. He mentioned at the last meeting that if the bond was not going to be approved, that he would want that project added to the current capital project. And then also, on line number, for the presentation I gave you, on page number seven, line number 31, the administration did not add any funding to the capital project plan, any new funding to the capital project plan for 2018, 2019. The original $960,000 that was, that is budgeted, if you go back to, for the audience, if you want to follow along on page number one, you'll see there's, in the last column where it says grants and surplus, there's $960,000 under... it says grants and surplus, there's $960,000 under surplus. That money for $960,000 was, was encumbered almost two years ago now, Councilman, Councilman Williams, Secretary of Defense?
Yes.
Almost two years ago, and that money has been allocated to the Zimari Park Pool Fund. So those are not new dollars. So basically, in the budget this year, capital project budget, the administration proposed $0 towards the completion of the pool project. So going back to page number seven, number 31, what I am, what I'm suggesting or asking the council to consider is to, to transfer or to move the capital requests Zimari Park dollars, which is $243,700 for a, for a, for a land acquisition under capital request, which is coming out of sales tax dollars, the $243,700 land acquisition for parking, or to expand a recreation center, to move those funds into the Zimari Park Pool renovation project. And also to move the $500,000 that was budgeted for parking for the Zimari Park Pool, to also move that into the Zimari Park Pool Renovation Fund, which would then allow us to appropriate $1,703,000, $1,703,700 into that fund so that we can continue to accumulate dollars towards the pool that we could eventually build for the city. That's, I think that was the only two requests that I had that we can add to the budget. And that would make the ending fund balance for, for, for the general fund, it would drop it by $100,000, and it would drop the sales tax budget by 110. I called Zeta today to talk to her about that, and she, she, she and I had a conversation regarding it, and she, it wasn't a matter of her being comfortable. I just asked her the questions on whether or not that was something we, we talked about how we would do that, and that was her suggestion to me.
Mr. President, I have a few questions about the pool. So I know there was a committee that studied on, what was, what was the determination? I think we're all appointed members.
Yes.
What did they determine? What kind of pools?
So, so the pool, so we went through about four meetings, and during the sessions, initially, we had a, we had two parts. We had a, two different bodies of water. We had a competitive pool that would be around 25 meters, and then we had a separate pool, as we would call, for the lack of a better word, a kiddie pool or more of a recreation pool. And those two pools combined was $2.1 million for the pools. That was, I think that was the initial plan. And then it was suggested, we went through four or five different meetings. I know that we had a pretty heated discussions and very healthy discussions. But as, at the end of the day, the, the committee said that we need to build a multi-purpose facility that would be, allow us to do competitive swimming, and also to be able to accommodate swimming for other activities that would be for seniors, that would be for beginning swimming, that would just be more of a recreational component, all into one body of water. And that pool, through the proposal that we had, came out to $2 million plus another million within that budget, was 2.1, I think, and then it was another million for the, all the other infrastructure parts for the pool. So then that came out to 3.12 million.
That was what was originally, the first proposed bond issue was 3.2 million.
Yes, right. That's what that was.
But now you're taking that out.
Well, because...
We're not going to bond that money, is that right?
Well, well, we, we haven't, you know, we, we have, because of the, the plan to try to generate more money through, through other areas, we're looking at moving those funds into, at least, at least we want to be able to secure those funds. So when we get to the second conversation, Councilman Williams, that we need to look at how we bond and would be bond if the, if the committee wants to bond. We know that we at least have $1.7 million in the budget to go towards the pool. So if we either bond or take out a loan for the balance, that would be up to the community to decide or to the council to decide. But at least we know that right now, in the current budget, if you look at it, I think the mayor has allocated 1.6 million, $960,000, which was surplus money. So it was really, really zero was budgeted for the pool, and then $500,000 for parking. So if we put all those dollars in the one, in one bucket, then we get to the 1.7. And then that money would then be dedicated to the Zimari Park Pool renovation project in order to be used for that project.
Mr. President, two years ago, we had a committee meeting, and you were involved in it. After that committee meeting, we had 1.1 million to build a pool, recreation pool, multi-purpose pool. When we started that process, it came to the attention, you wanted to get another committee. So then we had another committee. I think we have a few people in the audience that was part of that committee. Went to a 50-meter pool, that was $5 million. Went to a 25-meter pool with a secondary pool, that was $3.5 million. So here we now sit, a half a million dollars as per the master plan for Zimari Park. Did a master plan. The master plan said we need some infrastructure. Tear down the tennis courts and put parking. That's what the half a million dollars is for. Why take a half a million dollars from parking? Because we need that for the park as it is without the pool to begin with. We added the 1.6 for the pool in this year's budget. The point being, you can't build a pool without the parking, and we need the parking now. So why would you take the $500,000? It's a great dream to want a multi-purpose pool and a 50-meter pool, and will it generate economic dollars in the end of all ends? It may. But for right now, for the cost to the city, I don't think it's in the best interest of the city that we take the half a million. I think we go with the master plan, what you want to done, and rebuild the parking, which we can get done within the next six months, because we have the money, interest-free now, that we can put toward that.
So to kind of, Mr. Mayor, this is, you know, you made some points, good points there, but just to kind of elaborate on that, I did spend some time talking to Jeff Smith at the Holly and Smith. And also in the budget, under capital requests, there is $245,000 or $225,000 for land acquisition for general parking in downtown Hammont. One of the things that we talked about was the, the land acquisition that, that we've talked about was building more parking down on Coleman Avenue. So one of the comments was that, would it make more sense for us to consolidate parking in downtown so that we can use parking both for downtown and for the times that we have events? And if we were going to build more parking, does it make more sense to build that parking in downtown versus on Coleman Avenue? So we have the $243,000 that's in the capital request for parking, and I would submit to you that we can, because obviously, we don't have a pool. We still don't have enough money to build a pool. So until we can accumulate enough dollars to build the pool, parking is really going to kind of be irrelevant, because we, we would need to be able to reach the goal of, of the $3.1 million of capital dollars to, to pay for the pool. So I would think that we should focus on trying to gather the money for the pool first, and then as we do that, if we can't get the pool built, we just have to wait until we get the money for the pool. But it might, it might go beyond our time, but at least we know that those, that 1.7 million is in the budget to build a pool at some point for the city.
I respectfully disagree to the point that we have, we need parking by Michael Kenny said, which we're going to do on the side. George Anthony has a building that he has been holding on for us. He's had the ability to sell it. He's had the ability to, to lease it. It's 5,000 square feet. It's in between Cherry Street and Cypress Street and the parking mall. With that building being gone, and that mall be expanded, being expanded, you know, if you come downtown on any given weekend, especially if something's going on at the Columbia, if anything else is going on downtown, along with just general business that's happening downtown, we need more parking downtown. These are things that we need. These are things that we should be doing for the city now in the best interest of the city. So I just respectfully disagree with you on that.
Chuck. I just saw this, like most of you probably in the last 10 minutes. The only, I have three comments. Number one, I don't personally think we need to separate a competitive and a recreational pool. My boys swam for 12 years. They have one of the best swimmers, came out of the state of Louisiana. Where is he? Where's Brian Gores?
He's back there.
He swam on the same swim team. We never one time swam, but I'll stick it back. Unless we went to the UNO Aquatic Center, we swam in recreational pools for 12 years, 12 months a year, and did not need an independent pool. All the swim meets were held on the Monday that the pool was normally closed for recreational use. So that's just my two cents on having two million and a half dollar pools.
No, 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 Chuck. You have...
Can I finish, please? You've been talking since we got here. Can I talk?
Sure.
Thank you. It's a public hearing. I'd like to have my say, and then you can refute it when I sit back down, as you have everyone else that stood up here.
It's not a refute.
Oh, you absolutely are interrupting me before I can get my sentence finished. Thank you. So I, I personally do not believe we need to spend two or three million dollars on Aquatic Center. LSU and UNEAR, the only two that I know of in the southern part of the state. ULL doesn't even have one. Southeastern doesn't have one. I understand it would be a great thing to do, and also be a great thing to bring, bring a building amusement park. I mean, there's a lot of great things that could attract people. I don't deny that. But when you're stretched for funds to do so many critical things, I certainly want a pool as badly as you do. I think we've already missed a full season of pool use due to just this continuous debate over what it's going to be. I urge you to consider leaving the pool, leaving the parking in place as originally recommended. The mayor and I and Lacy went and argued over all these same points. We looked at the committee. We talked to some of the members of the committee. And the second point I want to make is, and you can take this as, I hope my sons don't listen to this, but never one time did they walk out of a pool and get into a shower or locker room before they came home. There's no point in building a $300,000 locker room. You have the pedophile issue, the security issue, the cleanliness issue, the, the maintenance issue, just, all you need is toilets. You do not need some fancy locker room, because ask Brian, you're not going to walk into that locker room and change clothes and shower if you're seven years old on a swim team before you go home. You're going to put on your stuff, and you're going to get in the car and go home. The third thing is, the parking is, is very important to Zimari, and I'd almost rather see you build a $500,000 parking lot than the pool, because you cannot get to that park. That's a very heavily used park, especially from the minority community that's close by. It's very complicated to get to. It's hard to get in. You can't get out. I've been over there. You've all been there for the lights. You've all been there for the decorations and the various Fourth of July events. So I would like you to retain that. I, I didn't know this was coming up. I normally would not make a public comment, but I know you're going to go to a vote next time, and I thought this would be the appropriate time to make my comments. Thank you.
Kind of question for you, Chuck. Just want to make sure you understood, because I thought I heard you say that there were two pools. I want to make sure that was clear. That's all I was trying to clarify. There are not, it's not two pools.
It's a pool and a kiddie playground or something?
No, no. That's what I was trying to clarify.
The picture I saw showed two pools.
So, so, so that's why I was trying to clarify. It's one pool. The initial plan was the two pools, and the committee decided not to do the two pools. And it became one pool, and it became 35, I guess, I don't know the exact configuration, but it came down to one pool. So that's what I was trying to explain to you. It's not a, it's not two pools.
I may be mistaken. The only drawings I ever saw were the two pools combined and the big elaborate facilities around it.
Okay. I want to make sure you understood that.
Mr. President, I have a question. So with regards to the pool, this is labeled as phase one, and there are dollars if this proposed move is made, does that suggest to move forward with construction of phase one?
You know, Lacy, we, and you and I know that we, and I'm asking questions because the questions I'm asking because the questions are being asked to me. We know that, just for the public record, we have never really done a RFP for the pool. That process never even happened. So we kind of had to go, I guess, it wasn't, we just never did the RFP. We did RFQ for the pool, so...
Correct. That's, that's, and I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's generally what we do for our construction projects, is you do an RFQ to hire an architect or engineer to design the phase and the, the whole project, do the cost estimate, talk about the scope, talk about the programming. We also did have Terricon come in with, who is an aquatics engineer, and they're the ones who gave the overall feasibility. They've been working with Chris Bankston and Gasway and Gasway-Bankston Architects. So I'm, I'm just, again, since this was just handed to us, this was not considered by the committee, I'm, I'm just a little confused about what phase one means of a pool project when our community has asked time and time again for this pool to be built. When will the pool be built?
Well, well, the, the, Frank, do you want to make a comment?
I just, I was on the pool committee, Frank DiVittorio, we were on the pool committee, and I believe, just to clarify to the council, the main recommendation, we did not, I don't believe we recommended any specific pool or design. We asked that you consider, in selecting a design, criteria that the ability to use it for recreational purposes and other purposes. But the one criteria that was clearly communicated, I believe unanimously by the council, I mean, by the committee, was that y'all move forward with a design that would allow y'all to proceed with having a pool in the ground for next summer.
Right.
That was, that was a, I think, a request that the committee made to move forward with getting a pool in the ground for next summer.
And he's exactly, and he's exactly right on that.
And if a three, and with budget considerations, if a $3.5 million pool is not, at one point, I think the mayor referred to one of the things as the five-year pool or two, original pool or something. I, I don't, I don't remember exactly. But the committee, the, in selecting the criteria in, in determining what pool to proceed with, the committee was clear in that the, the people want a pool in the ground. We would like to get it in as soon as possible, and we'd ask that y'all do whatever you can to move forward with a pool within the budget so that it can be in the ground next summer.
Mr. President, that, I was at the first pool committee meeting two years ago, two and a half years ago, and that's what, that's what the people wanted. They just wanted a pool to swim. They, they, you know, they didn't necessarily want a competitive pool. They wanted a swim pool. And I think if we had the money to move forward, it would have been, it would have been open by now. But we delayed it, we kicked the can down the road, and here we're all back to basically where we were two and a half years ago. And that's all the people wanted. The same thing the committee recommended is what was recommended two and a half years ago. I was at that meeting. They just want a pool.
Correct. And, and, and I think there was some, I think there, there was some dissension among the committee in terms of, you know, dealing with the conflicts Mr. Marshall's talked about, in terms of you got, you know, competitive, or maybe Mr. Spangler, you know, you've got the competitive, the recreational. These are all, they're, they're criteria that some of them are exclusive and that you can't mesh or it's difficult to mesh together. But the one thing that, that everybody could mesh together is, if you got $900,000 to build a pool, and you can start the project and get it in the ground next summer, people want a pool.
Okay. I have a comment. When we were, I was also on the committee when we were talking about the, the pool, and when we sent out the RFQ. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mayor, you told us about the different people who had put in the bids for that, and you told us that if we go local, that we would have a pool this year. And then when we decided to do the master plan for the whole park, we also did the information, we took $50,000 from Jackson Park to get the plan for the pool. Now, we did charrettes and public hearings and everything for the park, but Gasway never did come and do anything for the pool. That's why we asked for another committee, for the community to be involved, just like they was for the renovations for the park, for what the people want, the people who got to pay for it, what they want it. But we were told that if we pick Gasway, a local contractor, that we would have a pool ready for this year. Then we never did. We never had a meeting. We never had any kind of, we had to beg for some kind of plans of what they were coming up with. And then when he come up with that, they brought some man from out of state with that two-pool plan you was talking about, Chuck. That's who came in with that. And...
That was rejected.
And, and that was rejected.
Right.
And so it's not the committee that was holding back the pool. We, Gasway was holding back.
Gasway was always the architect on the pool.
Can I ask you a question, Frank?
Let me finish, if you would. Gasway was always the architect on the pool. The pool plans changed every committee that changed. I said, before we build a $5 million pool or a $3 million pool, let's let local pool builders get involved in the bid process. When, number one, we have the size of the pool that we're going to have, and we have the amount of money that the council decides they're going to spend on a pool. the amount of money that the council decides they're going to spend on a pool. Gasway can't go forward any more than what they have now without getting paid when you change the plans on the pool. Gasway was never out of the prospect of being the architect on the site. The confusion here is the fact that Gasway's not going to make another change to the pool, who's made two changes now, without being paid for it. So we need to decide, one, what type of pool we have, and number two, the council needs to decide how much money's going to be spent on the pool before Gasway starts again. Local, local builders, in my mind, would be the way to go, and I say local, Baton Rouge and Rollins included, Slidell, wherever, that build pools, which there are a lot of people out there. Surely can build us a square pool with 10 lanes, five foot deep on one end, seven foot deep on the other end, where people can roll and turn for a million dollars. I just, $5 million, $3 million, and that's what the company from up north came down and started talking about, the two separate pools and whatever, and the price started shooting up. So just to clarify.
Frank, I have a question for you, and I think you, I know you were on the committee. And I agree, we have no problems with Gasway, and they've, they've done what we've asked them to do, so I'm fine with that. But when we had the original design, and just for the, and I'm really clarifying this for the public because I know that the public wants to know. We had two different bodies of water. And we went and we realized, because at that meeting that we had, I think it was Council, Councilman Blunt, Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard, myself, and Lacy, and the mayor was at the meeting, and we all kind of realized that maybe the two-pool model is not going to work. And so that's when I asked the president and the council, let's, let's, let's take this back to the, to the citizens so we can get some input. And then every council person had a chance to appoint a board member, a member, an advisory committee, which we created. And you know how we, we went through the advisory committee, and it was, well, the kiddie pool can't be next to the competitive pool because we want to make sure that we could do that.
Yeah.
And then, and then we realized that we wanted to have a pool where Hammond High can swim, where St. Thomas can swim, because currently there is no place, there is no, no regulation pool for, for them to swim. So if you're trying to build swim teams through the school system, and I talked to, I see school representative, Brack Duncan in the audience, you know, we've had, we've talked about it as well, and I talked to Melissa Stili about this, and she's been superintendent, and they are, and there are opportunities down the road that where the school system might be able to help us participate in some, some way or another. But when we went through all those iterations, the bottom line, we came up with the, we called it a multipurpose pool, am I right?
Correct.
And, and, and Ms. Norma, who's over the seniors program, said, I don't want to be over here. I want to have my section for, for seniors, for rehab, for therapeutic. So we went through all that and created this pool. And then I said, it's not the committee's responsibility to fund the pool. It's up to the council to figure out how we're going to fund it. But the committee has to make the recommendation, which is what you, which is what came from the committee. And that design that we brought was priced at $3.1 million, it's not $5 million, and it was $2 million for the pool and $1 million for the infrastructure. And we know that, and the comment that we had at the meeting was, we might be able to take this back when we do an RFP and get it priced, and it might come back a little bit lower, but we can't do that until we're ready to make that happen. Am I saying that right?
I, I think for the most part. The, the issues, like you outlined there, there was criteria, everybody had their wish list. There was no way to put everybody's wish list together and end up with a basket that, for a million dollars, at least according to the numbers we had.
Right.
So, and, and to some extent, the committee did kind of punt back to y'all in the sense that I think there was a, there was a, and you did, you advocated for just kind of, you know, build, you know, dream and, and we'll figure out how to pay for it. I think the committee took a little different approach in that the communication I received from people, and, and I think, I think I'm speaking for the majority of the committee, received is that the first priority, again, in listing the wishes, you had to prioritize what's the first wish. And I think the first wish became getting a pool in the ground for next summer. So then the next question is, okay, how do we, what do we need to get a pool in the ground for next summer? We need money. So how much money do we have? So set the budget and, and then work from there with scaling back the dreams into what we can fit into the project. I think that's, I think at the end of the day, you know, we, we didn't have, we didn't follow the most strict parliamentary techniques, but we did have a motion, we did, that ended up in what we considered our kind of final resolution or recommendation, in that finances and getting the pool into the ground next year were two things that got into it. We did not, we did not whittle down, we did not, I do not believe, we came up with a recommendation that actually whittled out which particular wishes got adjusted, compromised to make that happen. I, I think Mr. Marshall's correct in that we, we needed more information in terms of getting the design within the budget. I think the mayor's correct, in that you can't have the architect try to figure that out until you tell him what the budget is. So I think we're kind of back to, what do y'all have to spend on this? What have you decided to spend on this? Here's the, here's the, the criteria that the committee and hopefully the public would like to see in it, and what can we afford.
Just for clarity as well, I spoke with Brack Duncan after I heard that comment earlier, and I know you can't speak for the full school board, but the current conditions of the school system, tangible parish school system, and you don't have to get up if you want, but if you could get up and tell us if y'all want to spend a half a million, quarter of a million, or a million dollars while we build this pool, is that can possibly happen?
Well, not like the one with Spock.
I'm sorry, but, okay, you answered my question. Thank you.
I think the other point of clarification too is that the original design was not the two pools. The original design was the design that was a competitive pool with a bump out area that was going to address all the needs that we discussed. That's originally what we had gone forward with two years ago, and then was halted when the call for an aquatic center, the call for an Olympic pool, all those discussions came about, and then the call for having a new committee. So the original plan was to do something that was more affordable.
Mr. President, I have a suggestion. Since we're not going to have a pool, obviously, for next summer, and we have a new, basically a new majority of councilmen being elected, let's, I mean, we've already kicked the can down the road for two and a half years, let's let them decide. I mean, they may have, they may have different ideas.
Hi, thank you. Alvin Rumfield, Orange Street, Hannah, Louisiana. Correct me if I'm misunderstanding this, but basically we take all the grant and surplus money, all of it, and use it for this, we still fall short, so we're still not going to get a pool. Am I correct on that?
Well, the way I see it, Alvin, is the $960,000, which is surplus, was already allocated two years ago. That was done two years ago. It actually was more, it actually came to, I think around 1.2. And then we used some of it to, for the demolition, and so it dropped it down to 960. So at this point, the surplus money, the administration did not add any dollars to this year's budget to help assist in building the pool. The only thing that is in the budget is the $960,000, which is surplus. Plus, what we're trying to do now is take the, some land acquisition dollars that's in the budget for parking, because we just approved the parking plan for the, for the city, for the recreation center a month ago, to add additional parking to the recreation center. And then there also was a suggestion not to add additional parking on, on Coleman, but to try to move those parking dollars into the downtown. So what we're, what we're saying is that right now, if we take the $500,000 and set it to the side, then, you know, your budget is 1.2 for the, for the pool. And that's all that we've been able to generate by using capital dollars, by using sales tax dollars only at this point. That's all that we have. So to your answer, there has been no additional funding added to the budget for 2018, 2019 for the pool.
So the answer to my question is, yes. It's, it's, it's short. It's not enough.
Well, it depends on what type of pool that we build.
Were you talking about the park, the planning and all? I came out for that, and it was awesome. I said, hey, if this is for kids, let me bring my kids. My kids came in, helped, said, we would like this, we like this. Well, Alvin would like a new Harley and a helicopter too, but my wife says, no, because we're not spending that kind of money on that. And while I love the park idea, I was part of helping, saying, hey, I would like this, I would like that. But if we take all of it, put it in here, and still fall short, I'm a little confused as to why we would do that unless, unless we're looking at something that's going to be a revenue generator. Is this pool going to generate enough revenue to subsidize doing this so when we go forward, it can help fund the maintenance and generate revenue to pay some of this back, more or less? Is this a revenue generating pool, or is this a pure park recreation? Because it's a lot of, seems like a lot of money to me. Maybe it's not. I don't know what most parks cost. I mean, you know, you talked about, you know, going to the school, which I, I don't think it or the university's going to work well for that. I think Chappaqua has plenty of parking, you can put it there, but I think that misses some of the mark of making it available to those that really need it the most. But again, if the money's not there, I don't quite understand.
Well, I think that if we put 1.7.
This is long discussion.
I think if we put 1.7 million dollars in the budget, and the city administration decides to, to try to look at a pool in that price range, that'd be up to the administration to come to the council there. But right now, if we don't, so one of the, one of the problems that we had, and we've heard at the meetings over and over again, is that we need to create a budget. We need to create a budget. We need to create a budget. So we're trying to build revenue, at least that's my goal, so that we can create a budget. I know that the pool that we looked at was 2 million plus a million for infrastructure. That's the plan that I saw. That's the plan that that group that we put together liked. Like, like Frank said, it kind of gave everybody what they want. Everybody wasn't 100% happy, but through the, through the, through the meeting, we were able to reach some type of consensus that this is what we have. And then my goal and my job was to try to see if we could find, if the council could then make a proposal to the council to fund it. So that's what we've been trying to work on. So at the best right now, we've been able to identify 1.7, and if the council approves that, that money would be set aside, and then we still have more time to try to find more revenue.
So it's not enough, but we would need more in the future, even more to fund this one project.
We have six months. We have more time to try to find more dollars if possible.
Okay. Is this any kind of revenue generator, or is it something that will continue being a maintenance fee going forward?
Well, I, I think that, I think that, you know, there, and I don't want to really get into a long conversation.
Will it be self-sustaining? It's kind of, kind of simple.
Well, you know, it's, it's a part of, yeah, go ahead.
Well, but that was the purpose of trying to make it a competitive pool. Because if we go back to, like what you said, just drop a pool in the ground, then it's going to be just like what we have now. It doesn't generate, it just sucks the budget, you know.
Creates a new drain.
Sucks the air out of the budget.
Right.
Right now, what we use the pool for, when we had the pool for use, was, I think we used it, what, six to eight weeks out of the year? And then we had a little recreational pool, and we had some, maybe some swim lessons, right?
So let me see if I can, so it recreational free, but the competition would help fund.
If we just drop it in the ground, it still won't be sustainable, right? But if we get a competitive pool, and we can do aquatic aerobics and mommy and me classes, and then.
Then it can generate its own maintenance.
It might not be sustainable, but it would be, it won't be sucking the budget dry as it is.
As much. Okay. I get that.
Do we, have, Councilman, have we done a cost analysis on the maintenance cost of the pool?
No, we.
They haven't decided on which pool yet.
Well, we have, and again, we have to decide on the, on the pool, Councilman Williams, and that's, that's what we were working on. That's one of the reasons why we looked at a different funding source, which we, you know, we, we obviously aren't probably going to do that, so, but we knew that we had the $960,000 in the budget for, you know, that we could use towards the pool. But, you know, it's, it's a, it's a bigger project than just the pool, you know. I could tell you, Alvin, since you asked, you know, the Holes and Murray Park plan is, is a part of a bigger picture, you know? And I'm not going to make an excuse for, you know, why I feel like we need to invest in Hammond. You know, I've been in Hammond for 18 years, and the city means a lot to me. It means that we can grow the city. I want to see us reduce the footprint of poverty in Hammond. I want to see us build things in our community that are going to grow the city. The Zemurray Park is a 33-acre park that sits in the heart of Hammond. It's a, it anchors a, a great community. Greenville Park is a huge community. I just spent four hours in, in Baton Rouge on last Thursday, meeting with the Louisiana Housing Corporation. And we sat in the room, and we were talking about a purpose-built community. And one of the things that the, one of the things that Keith Cunningham said to me was, we said, well, we want to, we want to build houses, and here's what we think we can do. We can revitalize the park. We could turn this park into a gym. And I says, and we would like to maybe start by building four houses in Greenville Park. And he said to me, why build four? We can give you 50 houses. If you're going to invest in your community, we want to invest with you, because we want to see the purpose-built community, and that's our goal. So it's, it's, it's a, you look at it as a, some people might look at it as a pool, but I look at it as a catalyst to revitalize the entire community. You know, we've invested in, you know, making Greenville Park School a STEM school. It's going to be a top-notch STEM school. If we put all of those things together, we have a chance to really reduce our footprint of poverty in Hammond, create a more desirable community, and grow that whole entire area of our city. The Coleman Avenue corridor could be a major project for our city. So it's, it's more than just a pool to me. It's an investment in our future, how we're going to grow our city. You know, I, last thing I'd tell you on this, Bill, this is Bill Henley, he owns a company called CDIT. He has a company that he is, I met with the mayor of Slidell last week, we were in Baton Rouge, talking about Louisiana Economic Development. They have a business, it's called CDIT, they have a business that's $30 million. They're about to go into a, into a hub zone.
I'm sorry, but are we still speaking about the budget?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. I'm answering Alvin's question.
Sounds like, with all due respect, sounds like a political speech.
I mean, you know, you know, we could be.
These are not allocations in the budget.
But you know, Mr. President, you know, I, you know, I would ask that I get the same respect when I'm speaking that the other council members do. You know, and, you know, it's just, it's just really disrespectful that I'm not, you know, I'm telling you, what I'm, what I'm trying to explain to you is that, this gentleman asked us, he's just hired 10 people from Hammond, and he's in Slidell. He owns a hub zone business. He says, if we can build houses in our hub zone, which is off of Zemurray Park, we can grow our industry, we can create that purpose-built community. So that's where, that's what we're seeing, that's what I'm seeing, and so I'm trying to make sure that these things happen so that we can create the spark in our community to grow our city.
Well, I love your passion. I love your sentiment. Sounds like you're putting an awful lot of eggs in one basket but don't quite have the egg yet.
Hi, my name's Bridget Wilson, and I'm so passionate about this pool. And Mike, when you just said, let's kick the can down the road, that is an insult to the community of Hammond. I have been swimming, I swam in that pool as a child, on a swim team. My daughter swam, we swam in that pool from March until November. So that pool, when there was a swim team there, when we could go in it because the bottom was falling apart, we were still in there swimming. We were swimming in that pool when the sides were falling apart. We were in that pool until finally, they found asbestos in the bathroom, and they said, it's not safe anymore. So we stopped using the pool. That pool provides the children of our community a place to go in the summer. Right now, there is nowhere for our children ages 11 through 18 to go, nowhere.[1765.51] Nowhere. They are in their homes, locked, watching TV, and playing on video games. If they could ride their bikes to the pool, they would be in that pool from 10 o'clock in the morning until 7 o'clock at night, having fun, playing, eating, using the park, being out in the community. I joined the country club this year, because I thought, "I will take my daughter swimming." Have I done it? No. You know why? Because I get off of work at 4:00, it closes at 7:00, and it takes a half an hour to get there. So I'm still not using it. Why? Because there's nowhere to go. So you guys, please, please, put a pool in the ground. Do a 25-meter pool. We can have swim meets. This man swam, where was he? I think he left. He swam in a 25-meter pool. We can have swim meets in a 25-meter pool. We can have aerobics in a 25-meter pool. We can have everything in a 25-meter pool. The kids swim at 6:00 in the morning and at 5:00 o'clock at night. And then it's open all day, all day, for the children, for the children of Hammond. So please, do not wait another summer. Please, and put the pool in the ground. The parking will come, but whatever can come, give them a pool, please. I'm sorry, I'm so passionate about this, and it just, you broke my heart when you said that, Mike. It just hurt my heart.
Let me respond, please. I, again, I was at the first committee meeting almost three years ago. We could have a pool. I'm not the one that kicked the can down the road. Maybe that was a bad phrase. I voted no for the second committee, because I didn't want to continue this process. I was in favor of the pool. It's not me that delayed the pool. But now, the fact is, we're six months away from a whole, basically, a whole new council, and we can't agree. So do I, I'm not opposed to the Zamari Park, but I'm not the one that delayed the process.
Well, and I'm not saying that you did. But that is a shame, because the citizens of this community want a pool. They have asked for a pool, they have committed their time, effort, and energy to meet, design, talk, whatever, and y'all just, you're letting them down. And I think you should do what you have to do to get a pool in the ground for next summer, so these kids can swim.
All right. The number of pool tells, Mr. President.
Let's move on to sewer. I'd like to, I've talked to Mr. Spangler, our city engineer, and there are a couple other sewer projects. Ms. Beer recommended, there's some sewer projects on Natchez Street that she would like to take care of, and there's a sewer project on Club Deluxe that I would like to take care of. I recommend that we, that number would be $230,000. I would like to make a recommendation that that money would come from the Water and Sewer Series 2013 bond, where there are $407,477 anticipated dollars in the ending fund balance. So I'm going to make that motion when the time is necessary.
What's the balance there, Councilman Hood? 407, 477?
It's on your consolidated budget, overall Water and Sewer Series 2013.
I see 407, 477?
Yes, sir. And so my request would be to take $230,000 of that, $100,000 for the Club Deluxe, $130 for Natchez, to put to that, to get some sewer infrastructure put in, when the time is appropriate.
I'm sorry, just a point of clarification, since, again, all this is brand-new. Is that for sewer rehab work, or is that a lift station upgrade?
No, ma'am. That is for extension of gravity. Extension of gravity sewer.
Okay, so could I get those numbers one more time, just so I understand what we're speaking about? And Seda, do you have some information that we could work off of?
He's talking about the ending balance, but these are the money, the key part of the funds.
Oh, the end fund, the ending fund balance in the sewer fund? Is that what we're speaking about?
Yes, 625.
Fund 89.
Fund 625.
Yeah, $407,000, yeah.
It's not a 420,000?
No, no. It's the Sewer Enterprise Fund, Water and Sewer Enterprise.
In order to do that, you have to use the transfer to complete that fund.
I'm sorry, could you repeat those one more time, just so I have them down? I'm sorry.
$230,000 coming from Fund 625.
But it was for the Hazel and-
Hazel Street.
Okay. And Natchez.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Natchez Street and Club Deluxe.
Natchez and Club Deluxe.
Natchez, but I don't know the Navy Street.
Was that on the five-year capital fund?
Natchez is the size within the Natchez.
No, it's the dead end of Natchez. It is, it's the dead end of Natchez, and it's directly across from the Seppi School. Trick. Where?
Number five.
Ready? Number five? Yes, we are. Number five, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not-to-exceed-15-million-dollar revenue bonds in one or more series of the City of Hammond, State of Louisiana, prescribing the form, fixing the parameters thereof, and providing for the rights of the owners thereof, providing for the payment of such bonds, and the application of the proceeds thereof, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Councilman Jason Hood.
Yes, we've discussed this many times. Councilman Marshall has provided the council and members of the audience that wanted a copy of the proposed projects. The $15 million is a not-to-exceed number. It is a box that we cannot exceed. Doesn't mean we have to, we use that money. I know Mr. Ryan is in the back, so we may need to get Mr. Jim Ryan with Government Consultants Inc. up, in case there are some technical questions that I certainly won't be able to answer. Good afternoon, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Councilman Hood. Jim Ryan with Government Consultants.
Say your name and address.
Jim Ryan with Government Consultants, 17001 Shady Arbor Lane, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. And I have with me Ms. Carmen Laverne with Butler Snow.
Mr. President, before we go, we obviously realize that in our effort to, you know, one of the things we were talking about is, what we're going over now, is that the number of projects that we want to get done, the, you know, it just, it's tremendous to get the projects approved when we're not, we're not able to budget the dollars that we wanted to. So the whole purpose was to try to bond these projects, so that we can, we would not have to, so that we can get more things done than we're doing. But in our haste to get that done, and looking at how we normally handle bonds on the city council that were approved by the council, we, we just assumed it was my fault. I assumed that we would be doing the same process. But we learned through the process that any new bond would require a vote of the citizens. So obviously, we are not in a position as a council to approve this bond without it going to the citizens. So what we have presented tonight to the council, if you look at pages 6, 7, and 8 in the first column, what we, what I did was I took the projects that were, that were in the 2018, 2019 budget, and I, they were over in the proposed budget, we moved them over to the capital project side, so we could fund those this year. And then we just left the balance of the projects on the, on the report. And if you look at the capital plan, pages number 2, 3, 4, and 5, those pages are the projects that the council has been working on for whatever amount of time to get on the five-year capital plan. So those projects are the ones that were left. We didn't add any more, with one exception, we added the $700,000 in the sidewalk improvement proposed bond items for Church Street from Harden to General Pershing. Other than that, the rest of the proposed bond projects came to a total of, which is on page 8, 7.734000, 7 million 34000, for potential bonding. Now, obviously, we know that if this, if this bond is approved, that the citizens would have the final say-so, and we would have a chance to, to review this in a public hearing with the citizens. And then the citizens would decide whether or not they want to move forward with these projects if that bond is approved. So that's kind of where we are right now.
So what exactly are we voting on tonight?
What we're voting on tonight, and, I mean, Carmen might be able to help explain that if possible. Carmen, can you do that for us?
Sure. So what you have before you is a bond ordinance. It doesn't commit you to borrow the money. The idea is to give you sort of maximum flexibility. That's why you see that $15 million dollar amount. It doesn't commit you to go forward. Clearly, this thing has to go to a vote, and you have to identify a concrete list of projects. But what it does is sort of, it gives you the flexibility to start moving the process forward. The next step clearly would be to call the election.
Two questions, please. If this bond issue passes, well, obviously, we can't pass it tonight, but if it passes, the other people, once, once our election happens, can the projects be changed? Again, because we have a new council coming on, so can they change those projects once there's an election?
It depends on how you move forward. I think most people move forward with sort of a list of projects that might be overly broad. For example, you could move forward with the approved list of projects being your entire capital plan. And then at the point the bonds are ready to go to market, you can cherry pick the ones that you're ready to fund. I mean, there may be some that are down the road. So it kind of depends how you choose to proceed.
Second question is, once the projects are picked and the bonds are sold, how long does the timeframe of those projects have to be done? What's that timeframe?
So typically, what you will do once the bonds are issued is you'll have to make a representation that it is your best intention, and that you intend to spend the money within three years. And those are tax rules. So clearly, things change, and there are some safe harbors. Not everyone spends the money within three years, but you, you need to have projects that are ready to go and can be constructed in three years. If there are delays, it's not the end of the world, but that needs to be your intention at the point the bonds are issued. So that would also dictate what projects are to be included, those that would qualify.
So what actually obligates the money? Is that a construction bid that's received by the council? Does that obligate the bond money at that point, or?
So that would obligate the construction phase of it, but the bonds, you're not obligated on the bonds until the bonds are priced, sold, and there's a bond purchase agreement executed, which would be post-election, that's down the road. So that would be the true obligation for you guys to issue the bonds.
And at that point, the full amount that the council has authorized would come down, and we would begin making principal and interest payments going forward.
After closing.
Right. After closing, yeah.
It's not, it's not the amount that they've authorized, because what they're doing is they're authorizing you not to exceed 15 million. And I think we're saying the same thing, but if it's downsized to 7.7, that would be the amount of bonds we sold.
Correct. That, that would be the, the point at which you would have to.
And so that total amount is drawn down, and then we begin making those principal and interest-
Drawn down, it's invested.
Right.
And as you draw it out of the construction fund, it's spent, yes.
Right.
And Carmen, one question for you. We would have an opportunity, if we so choose, if the president authorizes a public hearing, so we can kind of finalize. Even though we have a list here, we can really sit down at least and give the public a chance to say, "Hey, we, we, we see this, we want to, we think we want to do this as well."
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So what exactly is our timeline moving forward? Because I know there's been questions about an engineering and an economic feasibility report, there's questions about the election and when that would go on to the, I know you got to take the application to the bond commission, so what are the steps that we would take? What's that timeline look like?
So we sort of have to back into that timeline based on the election date. And really, the next available election date, there's a November election, but because of the deadlines, we're too late. So the December election would be the first one that you guys could get on the agenda of. The bond commission meeting, at which that would be heard, would be in September, and the bond commission's deadline is in August for that September meeting. So those are sort of the general dates that we have to work with. Your charter does require, prior to you acting to call that election, that you have sort of a engineering report, feasibility study, I think your capital plan falls into that, prior to the date of calling the election. So that, that's sort of the timeframe you have to work with.
Lacey, that means that you all would have to call the election no later than like your, your last July meeting, or your first August meeting. You all would have to adopt the resolution of the not-to-exceed-15-million-dollar parameter, as you know, has been approved by the bond commission. What they would be approving would be the call of the election.
The call of the election, correct. And really, you know, we might, could push that a little later in August, but their deadline is, I think, the third week in August.
And is that publication of the engineer and economic feasibility report, does that stand for 60 days prior to the election, or is that prior to the call, the council's call for the referendum?
Well, your charter is not clear. I would say to be safe, you would do it, if we can, 60 days prior to the call of the election. The charter actually says 60 days prior to the election, but it says you have to do it before you call the election, which doesn't really make sense, so.
So is that timeline still feasible, then?
It's feasible, it's tight. And I think probably if you guys start the process and are on track to adopt that resolution, calling the election, we could probably do it as late as mid-September, and the bond commission would allow us to submit the paperwork, submit a draft resolution, and they would, you know, quake. But clearly, before that bond commission meeting, which is the third Thursday in September, you have to have adopted the resolution calling the election.
And what are the fees that are involved with calling for an election, since we may or may not be having that December ballot, you know, that, and then the extra application to the bond council, and then the economic engineering-
We don't, we don't charge anything, professional fees to call the elections. And so it would greatly depend, and as you know, I think the December ballot's a congressional ballot. So typically, the feds pick up all or most of that cost. Your major fees are going to be recordation, recording, a couple hundred dollars there, and then whatever the ballot cost is. And that's going to depend on what else is on the ballot. But typically, for a federal election, a large part of that's eaten by the feds.
Yeah, it's nearly impossible to anticipate this far out what the ballot costs are going to be, and it does, it depends on who's on the ballot. We talked to somebody at the Secretary of State's office, and what they were throwing around is that the state or the feds pick up half, and then the state picks up another half of the half, and so then, whatever local entities have things on the ballot, it would roughly be half.
Then we're left with 10 or 20,000.
And depends on who, what else is on the ballot, and, yeah.
And unfortunately, they can't tell that until the ballot deadline, when they know exactly who's going to be on the ballot, so.
So what you're recommending is that we go ahead and pass an ordinance tonight, even though that's a city law, and then we go to a vote of the people?
Yes, because the city, the ordinance doesn't bind you to borrow any money or pay anybody anything. It simply establishes the parameters of what you can and cannot do. As long as you live within that principal amount, and those interest rates, and the term of that bond, you're not locked in any, you don't pay anybody anything. Tomorrow, you decide you don't want to do it, or if in three months, you decide you don't want to do it. If the day before the election, you decided you didn't want to do it, you don't pay anybody any fees, any costs, you're not obligated to take any of that money down.
So as a consultant, why wouldn't you just say, "Wait for the people to vote before you start this process"?
It's up to the council. I mean, I'm not making a recommendation, I'm not making a recommendation that you do or don't adopt it. Our job is to provide you with advice on timing, structure, pricing, terms, and fairness of the bonds. If you all want to adopt that tonight, that's up to you. If you don't, those are political decisions, not my decision.
And it kind of depends on timing. You know, if you want, if you get the ordinance process out of the way, then you have the election, it passes, then you can move pretty quickly in the sale of the bonds. If you're not in a hurry, it can certainly be done towards the end of the process.
But the physical sale of the bonds, given that the election would be, I think it's December 8th or so, and that would be if we hustle and make that, then the votes come back, then those are adopted, so the sale of the bonds would be sometime 2019?
That's probably right. I think it would be, best-case scenario, a tight squeeze to get it in by the end of the year, but.
And a lot of that, too, would be going back to structure and timing. If you and I sat down and said, "Look, we think rates are stable," or do we think the Fed's going to raise rates in January, February, let's try to push and get it done as soon as possible. If we think rates are fine, if there's a downturn in the economy between then and then, why push it?
But it definitely falls for the next, probably 2019, which is a- But it definitely falls for the next, probably 2019, which is a different council.
Likely 2019, you probably could push it 2018 if you needed to. It'd be tight to get it done, but you might be, you might be able to.
I think we have public comment.
Which ordinance are we passing, actually? Because there was two different ordinances that were linked up to the agenda.
I think it's one that was advertised.
It's the one that was advertised with the Daily Star, the one that was read.
Okay.
Carmen provided it to me today.
Any more questions for me, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Alvin.
Yeah, I have a question. On this, on the bond, I'm kind of curious how this works. So if you get approved for the full amount, and then whenever we're ready to say, build a restroom facility at K Square, we get the bond then? And then when we're ready to do the Zemary project, we get the bond then? Is it multiple bonds, or is it one bond, one time?
You could do multiple series. That's envisioned in the ordinance that you have tonight. You have the ability to do multiple series.
Right, so you get the bond as you need then, it's not one big chunk.
I think what I've heard is, is that you would, what they're planning on doing is borrowing, adding up the list of projects, borrowing that amount of money, taking that money, investing it, and then drawing it down as the construction begins.
Okay.
And there's a good reason for that. It would, it's much more expensive, as far as professional fees go, to do multiple small bond issues than it is to do one issue for multiple projects. It's multiple times more expensive.
Thanks, it makes sense to do it, is one thing. All right, well, then the other question was, once you say you get, you determine it's going to cost this much for all these projects, can the money go, can it change? In other words, instead of doing, say, every, the amount of money you determine for the bathrooms at K Square, you say, well, it's only going to cost that, half that much. So we're going to divert this money to something else? Or is it kind of locked at that point?
So, and that's what Ms. LaVern was saying. So what has to happen, according to your Home Rule Charter, is you've got to do an engineering report on the projects. And what the city has done in the past, and the reason they didn't have to have elections in the past, is because when they did the engineering report, they made it this big for every capital project you could ever imagine. If they had funded that, and let's just say we did that, if we did that, the bonds would truly be around $15 million.
Right.
The benefit of doing that is if you include in that engineering report, a feasibility study, every single project you could ever think of or hope for or want, and that's published and presented to the people, then when you get to the election, and they come up with a number of, say, $7.7 million, and you borrow the $7.7 million, and in a year and a half, you decide, I don't want to spend the money on that, I want to spend the money on that over here. That's a logistical thing. From a political perspective, and again, I'm trying to stay out of politics here, if they narrowly define the list that they come up with at $7.7 million, then that money, and that's what's in the engineering report, then once the bonds are sold, that's what the money has to be used for. If it's not used for that, you redeem bonds, you pay off bonds with it.
And if the bonds are possibly sold in January, possibly. Let's just say they're sold in January. And you have that amount, let's say it's 8 million. And you don't want to get involved with politics, but we have a new council in place, and they don't want to spend any of your money. The fees to you, and the interest being paid starts the day the bonds are sold, correct? Fees are paid, and you walk away, and you're done, correct?
Yes, there's eight or nine different professionals that would get paid the day the bonds are closed. You're absolutely right.
So if they change what they want to do with the next council, and don't want to spend the money and put the city in debt, we don't get our fees back.
That's correct.
Or the interest that we pay.
Or the interest that you paid until you redeemed the bonds, that's correct.
Greg Drew, 1500 University Drive, Hammond, Louisiana. It is amazing, the bedfellows that politics makes, huh? Mr. Hood, Mr. Marshall? It's interesting. From what I can understand, we've got $1 million that we can go ahead and start building a pool tomorrow. I don't understand why y'all don't go ahead and just do that. The kids need a pool. They don't need a big, huge, extravagant pool. They need something where they can go and swim. And $1 million, if it will pay for the pool, and it will pay for bathrooms to go there, the rest of it can be done later on through the master plan. It doesn't make any sense to bond out and have to pay $600,000 in interest when you've got the $1 million sitting there right now. And if you look at the other money that we're talking about, the $15 million for the entire bond project, I think y'all probably spend $5 or $6 million a year on maintenance improvements in the city anyway. So within three years, you would have gotten that $15 million, and you wouldn't have had to use the bond issue at all. This isn't a tax and spend community. This is a community that works as a pay-as-you-go. You got a budget, you got money in the bank. You go in and you do the improvements that you can with that. And I understand that there's times when there's emergencies that need to be done. And then you've got grants that we get from the federal government that can do some sewer improvements, that can do the sidewalks that we're talking about. Everything that y'all are talking about, that I saw on this list, could be done within the next few years without this bond issue. I don't understand why y'all are going to endet us for 20 years when there's no need to do it. Thank you.
Mr. President, I want to just say one thing to that. Greg, I want to just, I want to just show you, take you to, show you. For those, for those of you who are having interest, I just want to make this point. Because I want to just share this with you. So if you go to that page one, again, if you're interested, this has an example. I just want to explain this to the public. And again, this is not a, this is just, I'm just trying to help share information. Hopefully, you respect that. If you go and look at page one, and you look at your sales tax, in the first column, which says other sales tax surplus, for the entire capital project plan for 2018, 2019, we're allocated $1.4 million for capital projects. That's it. $1.4 million. So right now, prior to the add-ons that we just created, it was $5 million worth of capital projects. So we're only taking, citizens, I want y'all to know, we're only taking $1.4 million in sales tax dollars. Now go down to the second column of Table B. Look at your total capital improvements. You see this year, we're budgeting 5.7. And 2.2 million of that is coming from the loan that Lacey talked about at the very beginning of the meeting. So that's the majority of that funding. Look at the next year, look at 2019, 2020. $5.2 million worth of projects already on the list. We're only, we're only spending on the average $1.4 million a year. I just want you guys to see that. This is the frustration that we talk about. You could call it political, politics, or you want, I'm just calling it a spade a spade. This is what we have on the budget. $5.21, $5 million. The next year, $6 million. The next year, $5 million. Then go below that. Capital projects backlog, $26,154. That's up $5 million from last year. That's just the reality of the projects. So the projects are not getting funded. So to say that we are a pay-as-you-go community, we're only investing $1.4 million of sales tax dollars into the capital projects. And the capital project list that we have is $5.2 million. And when you look at the further budget, if you go to page two, and you look at the master plan implementation in 2020, 2021, we're seeing $1.5 million for the master plan implementation for Zemary Park. Well, that's all the sales tax that we spend. So we will not do that project. I'm telling you, we won't, that project won't be funded. Because we're not, we're not putting those sales tax dollars towards those projects. That's the whole point of the conversation. Now, it's the data, that's the data. You know, we've been fighting this issue for seven years, eight years. So, you know, we're just telling you how, this is why I wanted you to see this. Because when you start throwing numbers out over and over again, you know, people would say, well, we're not a tax and spend community. We are not raising anybody's taxes. This is a sales tax allocation. We're just using money and putting it in different buckets. We have a finite amount of sales tax. We're trying to use our sales tax to get the maximum amount out of it so that we can do these projects. Because when you're a city councilman or a city councilwoman, you know, when I go on Route St. Martin tonight, or Route St. Michael tonight, I'm going to see five houses with barricades. And you could drive it yourself, Dr. Nelson, look at it for yourself. You will see them. They're sitting there waiting for projects to be done. They've been there, in some cases, two years. You know, it took us, I have a house on Timber Lane that's been waiting for a project for 15 years. I've been working on it for the last three years, myself personally, and I finally got the money budgeted for that job. You know, that's what we're talking about. So you can say, yeah, we're not a tax and spend community. But what you got to understand is that these projects are all on this list because they need to be done. And all we're trying to do is get them done. Because each individual community, each individual house, Cherie Drive, if you go down Cherie Drive in Westdale, there are no catch basins at all. There's only one at the very top. So whenever it rains, there's nowhere for the water to go. So this budget also allows us to put catch basins on Cherie Drive. If you live on Cherie Drive, you'd be happy about that. If you don't live on Cherie Drive, you might say, well, it doesn't matter. But that's the type of stuff that we have to look at. And I know, you know, I talk a lot, I understand that, but I'm trying to make a point. Trying to share so you know. Now, you can, you could do whatever you want, but that's the facts. You see it right here in writing, you can look at that and determine for yourself, is that's what we're doing. So do we want to spend $1.4 million on sales tax projects, and that's it? Again, remember, we talked about the pool, there was $0 funded, put in the budget for the pool this year. Zero, zero. I just want to make sure you got $0 allocated for the pool this year. So we're trying to put money into the budget for the pool because the administration put $0 in the budget for the pool, already knowing the pool is going to be more than a million dollars.
Council President, may I just make a?
Can I comment?
Yeah, come on over.
Good. I don't usually show up here, guys, so you're, you're going to, you're seeing an unusual situation. The city of Hammond has stepped up time and again.
Just give us your name and address.
Oh, Paul Billingsley, Number Four Fair Review Court, Hammond. Okay. We stepped up time and again. The Recreation District, who pays the millage? The Magnet School, excellent, who pays the millage? We do. And that doesn't need to be forgotten for the simple reason that every time somebody says, let's float a bond, you always got to wonder, when's it going to come due, and what's it going to cost us? We all know, like when we mortgage our house, we're going to pay more for the use of the money than what would it cost we paid cash, right? Right. No one has ever stepped forward to say, here's how much of this money is going to hit the bottom line for projects after we pay all of the fees and costs. That gentleman wasn't here for charity, okay? He's got a vested interest in what happens here. Let me go over a couple of things you got to remember. One, we have other tax proposals lurking in the corners. How's our jail looking? Not sure. The bond didn't pass. It's going to be back up. The school district, they wanted to pass a tax, Brett's still here, and they're going to bring it up again, too. Maybe even before some of this will even get on the budget. Who's going to pay for that? It's going to be us, okay? So you're talking about, well, we have these capital projects. We elect you folks to pick and choose. Take care of the necessary stuff first. If we really need a sewer project, fund it. And if you can't afford something else that's more expensive, what do we do at home? The kid wants a new bicycle. Well, there's some folks in this town that can't afford a new bicycle. Gee, Johnny, got to wait. Well, maybe some people in this town have to wait, and instant gratification isn't the answer. Credit rating for the city, let's talk about that one. Nobody wants to talk about the credit rating. You start floating bonds, and you're saying it's the sales tax. What's coming off the top of the credit rating for the city? Because that might not be available when you really need it later. That's something that should be done very, very, very soberly and slowly. You need to do that. Some of these things we really don't need. And what happens if Katrina hits again? Okay? Is the state going to step up? They're busted. Is the federal going to come forward and help our city? What have they done for the people of New Orleans? They're still waiting to see their Katrina money. And yet, you want to erode the reserves and our ability to pay the debts or the expenses that we have. Now, if it sounds like I'm opposed to your program, you're right. I'm not being real subtle about it. Just a few comments.
So the man that spoke before me.
Say, Matt, give us your, give us your name and address.
408, I'm Matt Sanford, 408 West Charles Street. The man before me posed a lot of the things, I'm sure y'all, and people lining up one after the other, pose, which is the problems with taking bonds to fund things like capital projects. What I want to talk about is more the process to take these bonds, and this, the Home Rule Charter, what is like our constitution for our city, the thing that gives you guys power, and the thing that sets the table to take this. Mr. Marshall, in his packet that he handed out to everybody, actually included it on the last page. So there's some few things in there, you know, I would akin, he also hinted at it, that the last person that spoke, the council for the bond agency, that lawyer, it's akin to having the fox watch the hen house. As the mayor pointed out, that man gets paid if we apply and take $15 million, whether we take the money here, there, everywhere. So I believe they have a little bit of a, like the previous man said, vested interest in what happens. So my question on processes, I don't understand the ordinance. Lacey also kind of said that also, because the Home Rule Charter, everybody who here, it's pretty, to me, the last lady said there was a lot of vagueness in here. If you understand bonds, the general purpose of bonds are for big projects, like you need a library. And you can't come up with $15 million to build the library. You would bring that for a vote to the public, and you'd build the library with the bonded debt. It's not for things like paving a new sidewalk down my street, and somebody's got a pothole in front of their yard, and there's caution tape there. So whenever you read this, if you think about it in the manner that bonds are usually used for, when it says, no resolution shall be passed calling for a referendum to incur bonded debt till an engineering and economic feasibility report shall have been made to the council and a summary published for at least 60 days. That was the process they were talking about. So when you're talking about bonds, the way that I read this, as a layperson that can read and comprehend things, for you guys to vote tonight, it shouldn't be something that is able to be voted on. You guys have the ability, in the charter, to issue bonds. You have that ability once you do these processes. The process isn't issuing an ordinance to take $15 million bond, and then ask the public for all these things. You guys are meant to have a project identified, then engineering, so that'd be Mr. Chuck, or whatever engineer y'all hire, economic feasibility, so like the pool. The pool would be a good example for this. You bring it to all your councils, all the people, they give you what they want. You have a price, so say it's $3.5 million. You get the economic feasibility, then you ask the public for a pool vote. Then the public would vote on the pool, and then you could continue with your bond. So y'all have power in here to, you know, levy taxes, issue bonds. But Section 5-08, that everybody's been referencing, gives you the vehicle in which you do that. So I don't quite understand what the ordinance is for, as I don't see any spot under bonded debt where it gives y'all the right to pass an ordinance, approving ordinance, passing, approving, to approve bonded debt. You guys are able to set everything up, you put it on the tee, and then the public gets to decide whether to decide whether they're going to hit it or not. You don't get to do it in reverse, the way that the bond man would say you get to do it, whereas you get to pass $15 million worth of bonds, and then you get to vote on each little section every time you put one up. That's not what this is meant to do. The 60 days in the economic feasibility engineering, it seems to me is clearly meant to be done per project before you vote on any sort of bonds. So I'm still not quite understood, Lacey asked what this ordinance is and is it legal to pass? I would think any yes vote on this ordinance tonight would be basically- Yeah, illegal. So I don't, y'all have a city attorney, if he's telling you anything other than you should be waiting to get an opinion from Attorney General if you could do this or not, in my opinion, would be poor advice from your city attorney. It seems very simple. Don't make it harder than what it is.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Mear, 44065 High Oaks Trail. Before I state my comments, I'd like to be very clear that I'm not speaking on behalf of any group or board, this is not personal towards anyone on this council or administration, but are my personal comments on the actions, and comments of the positions, of the position that you guys hold. First, I'd like to thank our city council members who have, for their service, but especially those that have been on for three terms. That's a big commitment for our city. Councilman Williams, Councilman Blunt, Councilman Hood, as my councilman, has all served three terms in our city, have done. So in my opinion, to the best of their ability with a valiant effort to protect our city and serve the public. So thank you for your 12 years of service. Tonight, there's an item on the agenda that could add up to $50 million of debt to our city budget. Five months before many of you finish your third term and five months before the new city councilman mayor will be chosen by the citizens of Hammond. While I believe you have a job to do until your term ends, there seems to be a lack of information and, more importantly, agreement by the council and administration. On a project this size, I think we should have an agreement by both parts of our city government, why this bond is needed at this time. At the last council meeting, a member of this council made a motion to table the agenda to accept a low bid and approve 10 hangars at the Hammond Airport with funds that were already set, have been set aside in the current budget, that will produce income for the airport and in turn for the City of Hammond. That item needs to be approved. However, this was the same agenda item at a past council meeting that council members declined to approve because Councilman Hood stated we had infrastructure items to address, Councilman Marshall needed more information before he could decide, and Councilman Beard voted no on the item, Councilwoman Beard voted no on the item, as she stated because the users would be from outside the city. While I believe there is complete agreement that if there are situations that major drainage projects need to be done immediately to keep homes from flooding or sewer and water projects, that bond money is one option that could be used by, then by all means, there would be support for a bond loan. However, the present infrastructure concerns appear to be addressed in the five-year plan or additional priorities need to be reviewed. It appears that Mr. Marshall has received the information he needed, as he is now proposing an additional 20 hangars. And Ms. Beard, the reason you stated could be the same reason not to build a $3 or $4 million pool complex to host competitive pool events that would be used by people from outside the city. I don't think that's an accurate statement. That also sends the message that our city council does not want people from outside the city spending money in our city. While I strongly believe that we need to replace the previous pool so that our community has a place to learn to swim and enjoy time together, where is the data that would show the budget impact of operations, maintenance, and how many swim meets it would take to support the operation? The funds for the hangars, building the 10 hangars has already been approved, the reason it was tabled last time was so that they could consider building 30 hangars, all at the same time, that could possibly get a better price on building 30 units at one time. While that may be something to consider, the council must also weigh in the cost of borrowing the money versus the cost savings of building more units. The interest on this project would be about $632,000 in interest. I don't think that will save the city over $600,000 building 30 hangars instead of 10 at a time when compared to the cost of the bond money. If the council could allocate the funds in this year's budget to build 10 hangars, why couldn't that happen again over the next two years and have 30 hangars built and paid for in three years without additional cost of interest on bond money while making rental income during the same timeframe and generating economic development at the airport? This investment at the airport, along with the rippled investment of buying fuel, other purchase and maintenance that would take place, would allow the airport to be profitable for the city. Using these funds already allocated for hangars will get us started and attract other business visitors and visitors to Hammond, also for the pool with the money we've got already allocated. The sale tax income appears to be stable and being maximized within the current budget. Placing millions of dollars of debt on the city at this time does not appear to be the right path, and many are asking that this be a no vote and reviewed further to consider the cost of the bond money, the new cost of the new pool complex and the cost of maintaining and operating the pool complex. I thank you for your time, I thank you for your service, but please do not strap the citizens and the incoming council and administration with this decision that many of you will not be here to deal with in the future. Again, this is not personal towards anyone on the council or administration, but are my personal comments on the action and comments of the position that you hold. As the 10-hanger project should have been an easy vote, this is an easy no vote for the ordinance at this time. Thank you.
Mr. President-
Just a couple of comments on that. Just for the information, the $645,000 that was allocated for hangars, the airport board said that they have 40 on the waiting list, 40. So, again, if you, and I'm just trying to make sure everybody understands, if, according to what Joe just said, if you, she said you can fund next year and next year, 645, 645, well, Joe, there is no money in the budget for next year for 645, and there is nobody, no money in the budget for the following year. So there is no funding, there is no funding in the budget to build the additional 20 hangars, and it's not even proposed, even though the airport board is asking, they say they have 40 on the waiting list. And so this budget doesn't even address any of that. This is what we're trying to explain to you, and I know it's just the way it is, you've got to be able to look at the data. There is no, no dollars in the budget at all for any additional hangars beyond the 10. And if you were only allocating, let's just say, $2 million of sales tax, you're not going to take $645,000 of sales tax for the hangars because there's another $26 million of backlog of projects right now. That's just, you have to see that. And I think if you, if you, if you look at the numbers and you want to really look at the numbers, that's what I'm trying to explain to you.
Mr. President, councilmembers, Elizabeth Smith-Hollywood, 711 North Oak Street, Hammond. I'm here in my capacity as the chairman of the Board of the Greater Hammond Chamber. The Chamber, the Greater Chamber of Commerce has a responsibility of advocacy, and I'm reading this directly from our website as part of our program of work, facilitating education of elected officials and constituents on relevant legislative issues and public policy with potential direct impact on member businesses. You know, businesses don't function in a vacuum. Government impacts everything that we do as member businesses. So with that goal, and with also with the goal of being a resource to you or council members and giving you any information we have from our member businesses, we sent out a survey on Friday of last week with information that we had on these bonds. I know some of that has changed based on tonight, based on the information that we had, that we had tonight. We sent the results of that survey out yesterday, but there's still some relevant information, I think, that I'd like to share with you. If you hadn't seen the results of our survey, that will, that still have bearing on, even with the changes. We asked our members, we represent 650-plus members in this area, if they were in support of the City of Hammond incurring $12.4 million at that point of indebtedness to be paid over, back over 20 years at $6.5 million interest. 81% of the respondents said no. Now, I know that probably will change, when that looks like 7.7, we don't know if it's still going to be a 20-year repayment and what that interest would be, but I would just want you to be aware of what your member businesses have said. They also said, when we asked if they were in favor of the current list of proposed projects, 82% said no. Furthermore, when we asked them about whether or not you, as a council, four or five of you will not be serving next year, should be the ones that are making this decision, especially in light of these bonds probably will not be issued until 2019, and the majority, 83%, said no, that you should not be, you should not be the ones that are making this decision. If the funds are borrowed, there is some information that we also provided, our members do ask that you use, in selecting projects, that you choose funding for projects that have a life expectancy that's greater than 20 years, life of the bond, that when you are considering the projects, you consider the maintenance and the operating costs associated with those projects, that you also consider and prioritize projects that are able to generate income that could be utilized to repay the debt. And if the funds are borrowed, those for items that are, that we could get federal or other grant monies for, such as sidewalks, for instance, that those projects not be bonded, and that you have, the city council have a plan to address future capital improvements beyond that five-year plan. So we wanted to provide this information to you, let us be a resource to you, as your council members. It's our responsibility and our duty to advocate on behalf of our members, so we provide this information to you. Thank you all for your service, and we appreciate you.
Josh Taylor, 44051 Forbes Farm Drive. I for one, I'm excited tonight. I'm excited that the people of Hammond get a voice, and we didn't think they were going to get one in this. So going for an election, I think is one of the best things we could have had come out of this. So, but with that being said, I think following the procedure is very important in being on the safe side rather than sorry. I don't think that we advertised properly, I don't think we did the 60-day notice. I think that we need to do that, even if it is starting now, that would put us on the next, that puts us July, August, end of August, maybe early September, I don't know if that's going to make the bond council meeting or whatever deadlines, but I think we need to go through and be safe rather than sorry on this. So I would request that we remove the item from the agenda and start this process over the right way it should be. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is David Tinnell. I reside at 803 West Idaho. I am a resident of the City of Hammond and a voter. I sent all of y'all, all of the councilmen, a letter earlier today, didn't expect to be able to make today's meeting, but I heard some comments made in the back, and I understand there's been change in numbers a little bit, but I heard one particular item I'd just like to address. My appreciation is you're looking at a $15 million bond issue at 20-year amortization, which would be the bond plus bond issuance costs plus accrued interest on an annual basis. And I believe, you know, without running through the numbers, that would be at least $1 million a year in debt service. I think we can all agree on those numbers as being relatively conservative. Mr. Marshall mentioned that we, right now, we have a million-dollar commitment, a million four commitment to capital improvements. I assume that the funds necessary to fund the bond indebtedness is going to come out of this money, because what else are you going to do? Cut police, fire, administration, council fees, council salaries? Yeah, I don't think there's a lot to be cut, so you're going to have to reduce that $1.4 million to service your debt. That's going to leave you $400,000 per year before you open the pool. Now, I don't know if you've operated the $3.5 million pool yet or looked at the operating costs, but let's say it's conservative, but $100,000, that's going to leave you $300,000. You haven't even paid the utility bill on the new sewer treatment plant facility that you want to enhance. You haven't paid the insurance cost on the stuff that you're adding. And so when all of y'all are gone but one person, and that's Councilman Beard, and I admire you for being willing to stand up here next year, she'll be facing the music when you don't have the money to operate the pool, and she'll be facing the music by herself while you're dancing on your accolades of what you accomplished. She'll have to face the music, but not you. And that's unfair. It's unfair to pass that dead burden to the next generation of citizens, of voters, and of councilmen. I think you ought to reconsider even the thought of doing this, to be fair to everybody. Thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to respond to that. So to answer your question, Dave, the net of the effect of the bond for next year, if we, that bond were to pass at the $14 million, it would increase the capital expenditures, capital budget by 600, I think $670,000. And then, and over the next two years, you have, you're retiring your bond debt. So I think we looked at was, for the first two years, you would have an increase of $600,000, and after that, it would level, we would have more monies available because we're going to be retiring the bond, so that bond would just step right in, just like we typically do now. So we're, two years from now, we're going to have, we're going to have a bond that retires, so we would be able to use those same funds that we're allocating right now for our bond debt service to pay those bonds, to pay the new bond. So the net of, the net effect right now, if that were to happen, which we know is not going to happen at this point, the $14 million, it would have cost us $600,000 more next year than, than we would typically spend for sales tax for bonds, for bonds or for projects. So it's not, it would be reasonable for us to manage that without a problem, with the current budget that we have.
Just a point of interest, Mr. President, so with the schedule that we were given, and I realize we've talked about a lot of different numbers about how much we would actually be bonding, those numbers have varied anywhere from $7 million to $15 million, and it's hard to keep up at times. But the last one that we were offered that was on a 12.4 schedule was an additional $600,000 to $700,000 each year for the first 10 years, and then that would increase to $1 million, because what we're trying to do is wrapping our new debt around our existing debt. So realizing that our total debt service payment for next year would go to $2.1 million and then would decrease to, would go to $2.2 million for that second year, and then for the third year, it would decrease, as you're describing, to $1.7 million. And then it would carry on to that until about 2026, when we pay out the previous bonds that were taken out.
Right, you're exactly right. And that's exactly what, so it's not that the height of the whole project would be $650,000 or $670,000, and that's, would be it.
Well, that would be for the first 10 years, and then for the next years to pay off the bond, it would be a million, a little over a million dollars. And then the other point of interest that I might point out, because I think we've had lots of debate about how much the city pays for capital projects and where we invest those funds and how we pay for maintenance and all these things that we take for granted of trying to make Hammond the best place it can be. I think you were calling attention to one specific column on here, and I don't think that's quite fair. I think it's important to realize that if you add up the other sales tax surplus, if you add up the Video Bingo funds, which are dedicated to capital projects, if you add up the water and sewer funds, which also go to their capital projects within that enterprise fund, if you add up the capital requests that are within the departments, if you add up the grant match that's allocated each year, you're looking at about $4.2 million in one year that's spent, plus if you look at all the grants that we have brought in, and that's truly what we're talking about, is leveraging funds. We're talking about bringing back tax dollars and making sure that we get the best money for what we're trying to do. And if you look at grants over the last eight or nine years, that's a total of $22.3 million. So to say that the city is only spending $1.5 million a year on capital projects is just really inappropriate.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Yeah.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Farnabyar.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Here.
Heavenly Father, at this time, we are coming to you asking for guidance. We ask that we be attentive, that we listen, and that we do all that is in our power to make this place a great place for us to live, to work, and to be educated. We come, Heavenly Father, asking that we be fair- We come, Heavenly Father, asking that we be fair, and that we listen to everyone that, that's talking, because they're the ones that have to pay for this, and they are also the ones who have to decide on how they want to live within this city. We pray, Heavenly Father, that we do everything that is right and in order, that is according to dying will, because dying will, oh Heavenly Father, is all that is important, because you are in control of everything. We come, Heavenly Father, asking blessings upon each and every member, citizen of this great city, and we pray for this state and the United States of America. These are all blessings we ask, in the name of your precious Son Jesus, to God be the glory. Amen.
I would invite all active and retired military to remain in the proper salute. I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the sake of time, I just want to remind everyone that the Fourth of July festivities will be on Wednesday. The fireworks will go off at nine, and the festivities will start at six, so please come out, bring your children, your family, and enjoy the night. Thank you.
Are there any business that might be recognized in here tonight? If it's not approved, a minute.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Counselman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Counselman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Counselman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Counselman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion to approve.
Resolution, uh, old business.
Old business, we have one. Number, old business, number one, a resolution to ratify an award bid received on June first, two thousand and eighteen, for airport hangar, Sierra Gagne.
Good evening again. I think you all have the computations of the, of the hangar bids. The low bid was six-hundred-and-eight-thousand, which I think was within the budget. I would like to have it approved.
Counselman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Counselman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Counselman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Counselman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you all.
New business, number one, a resolution supporting the submission of a five-thousand-dollar Pet Safe BART for your park grant application to enhance and expand Zemary Dog Park. Charles Brocher.
Good evening. This one's fairly self-explanatory. The mayor was approached a couple of weeks ago by a citizen-formed grassroots group called the Zemary Dog Park PAC. They represent the various dog owners that use the park, have some great ideas for improvements. My office has been working closely with them over the last couple of weeks, and we've identified this as a potential source of funding for some of those improvements. This was something they were actually looking at and turned us on to. It's a five-thousand-dollar grant, no match required. This isn't our master plan, as you all know, so we're trying to find some money to start making those improvements.
Motion to approve.
Counselman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Counselman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Counselman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Counselman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number two, a resolution supporting the submission of a five-thousand-dollar Walmart Community Grant Application for Hope After-School Program. Charles Brocher.
Again, this one's fairly self-explanatory. This is a grant we've actually applied for in the past. This year, we're looking at applying for it to assist in the programming at the after-school program. They've been relying on a grant for a couple of years. That grant has expired, so we're trying to find them some additional funding. Obviously, this is not nearly what they'll need, but it's a start.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Counselman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Counselman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Counselman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Final adoption of an ordinance, number one, final adoption of an ordinance to accept a street dedication request by Susan Cuzanne of a zero-point-ten acre portion of Harden Drive, right-of-way being twenty-point-fifteen by one-seventy-three by thirty-one, in accordance with survey by WMJ Bowden Jr., dated May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, Zone RS eleven-A, recommended approval by planning commission.
As it was introduced, this is a strip of land that actually goes in, off of this person's property into the middle of the street, and as I stated earlier, we're trying to, this is a motion to, she is willing to donate to the city that thirty feet of property.
Motion to approve.
Counselman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Counselman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Counselman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Counselman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number two, final adoption of an ordinance to rezone seventeen-point-five acres, being the proposed Covington Ridge subdivision from RS eight to planned development, request by Landrick Real Estate LLC, in accordance with zoning map by McLean Taylor, Inc., dated May fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, located at tenth at six-oh Covington Highway, recommend, recommended approval by zoning commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Counselman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Counselman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Counselman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number three, final adoption of an ordinance for an expanded conditional use request by the Nightcap Billiards and Eatery to allow sale of alcohol in conjunction with a Billiards Hall located at four-two-three-zero-nine South Morrison Boulevard, Suite B, in accordance with the site plan, dated May eight, May eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, Zone CH, recommended approval with the following conditions by zoning commission, A, this approval is for the understanding, will expire upon exchange in occupancy of ownership for the Nightcap Billiards and Eatery, and B, the approval is only for a Suite B acting as Billiards Hall.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Counselman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Counselman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Counselman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number four, final adoption of an ordinance to adopt the City of Hammond budget for the fiscal year twenty-eighteen, twenty-nine, twenty-nineteen, in accordance with the procedure set within section five dash zero-three of the City of Hammond Charter.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to remove the ten-thousand dollars for the, I guess, consulting fees for the Hanzel museum for the study that's already in progress.
No.
Counselman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Counselman Johnny Blunt.
No.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
No.
Counselman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion denied, motion fails.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to remove the twenty-five-thousand dollars for the city marshal, uh, the seventh ward marshal, with stipulation that if the, the law that changes the fee structure does not pass, then it would be reinstated. Is that, Andre, good?
Well, I, I was heard earlier tonight that the governor passed that, that we could check on it and see, so you, you could have the motion subject to that.
Okay. Well, that's my motion then. Thank you.
Could you restate the motion, please?
Yes, to remove the twenty-five-thousand dollars requested, it was requested by the seventh ward marshal, be reinstated unless the law increasing his fees does not go into effect, which I, I believe has gone already into effect, but I'll add that.
Counselman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Counselwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Counselman Johnny Blunt.
No.
Counselman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Counselman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number five.
I'm sorry, we have some other items to reconsider.
Mr. Pr, uh, I'd like to move that we, we add two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars for the Hazel Street Canal project by, by moving one-hundred-and-ten-thousand from the sales tax revenue and one-hundred-thousand from the general fund.
Is that?
One-hundred-and-ten-thousand.
Is that for Hazel?
It's the Hazel Street Canal, it's number twenty.
Can you repeat the funding at the end?
One-hundred-and-ten-thousand from sales tax and one-hundred-thousand from the general
So I have a motion by Counselman Marshall and a second by Counselman Jason Hood. Counselman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Counselman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Counselman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Counselman Mike Williams.
Aye.
And also.
Motion approved.
I'd like to also make a motion that we, we move two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-seven-hundred dollars transferred from the capital requests, Zemary Park project, and five-hundred-thousand dollars from the, from the parking project for Zemary Park into the Zemary Park Pool Renovation account, as a capital project, where the total would be, with the nine-hundred-and-sixty surplus, nine-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar surplus, that would bring the total to one-thousand-seven-hundred-three-seven-hundred dollars.
One million?
One million, seven-hundred-three-seven-hundred.
Counselman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Counselman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Counselman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Counselman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
May I have a point of clarification on that one? Are we authorized to move forward with that funding, or is that, like, should we go forward with the architect now and try to figure out what kind of design one-point-seven will fulfill, or?
I would like, Lacy, like, we talked about the design that was recommended from, that we brought to the commi, from the committee, we would like to see what that, what that, what that design would look like, and then what else we would have to do. We'd like to get some prices on that design. You know, we had talked about taking that back and getting another, maybe doing an RFP on that design, to make sure that we were, we were, we had the best pricing possible. So that's what, what I would suggest that we do.
I'm sorry, so let me understand, you want to do an RFP on the three-point-two-million-dollar design?
No. Well, we talked about it at the last meeting, and just, you know, we, as a matter of fact, we could, we could cover it after the, the meeting and talk about it, if you'd like to. Since, since we're just voting on the budget, you know, you can, we can, you and I could talk about it.
Okay, because typically what happens once we authorize the budget is that we can move forward with the projects, and what we've seen, you know, with several of our projects, is then that's not the council's pleasure necessarily to move forward with the projects.
Well, the design plan will have to come back to the council, so I think that we can begin the process to see what's, what's, what's available.
The design that was approved was a twenty-five-meter pool, ten lanes wide, with an outcatch within the same pool that would be a side swim spot.
Yes.
So we would take the one-point-seven million, go to Gasway and have them give us the price, and see if we can get that particular pool, twenty-five meter, ten lanes wide, with the outbuild, which is all still a big square.
Right. Yep.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
No.
Yeah, we have some other items.
Yes, sir. Okay. Everybody's finished?
We had to, we, the other one.
Okay. But it was a clarification.
Okay, so, Mr. President, I would like to transfer two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars from the fund number, sorry, well, fund number six-forty-five, six-twenty-five, Water and Sewer Series two thousand and thirteen, two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars specifically for Club Deluxe, one-hundred-thousand dollars for Club Deluxe Sewage Infrastructure, and one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars for Natchez Street Infrastructure.
Counselman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Counselman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Counselman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Counselman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
I think that's all of them is.
I think that's it.
That's it?
How many motions are, are we?
No, we, we have to, do we have to also approve the retirement? And the retirement, whether we could.
Yeah, Lacy, go through those. Just, let's get a, yeah, a motion and second to amend it, to include those.
Yeah, it's on your sheets, it's the first two items there.
Yeah.
Like a motion to amend the budget with the two items that the administration has risen and discussed earlier.
Well, let's, yeah, let's, let's just stand on record, just generally what they are. Those are the salary.
It's the, it's the police, it's the increase to the police department budgets, so it's several budgets within that, and I believe the number is seventy-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-nine dollars, and that is to cover the increase in retirement. And the second one that the, that the administration is requesting is an increase to the mayor and directors and to the recreation program departments. It is not to add any people or anything like that, it's just to correct the formula error of everything that was already showing for salaries, taxes, benefits, workers' compensation. That's an addition of sixty-three-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars, and we had proposed that those would come from the Sales Tax Fund two-oh-three, to be transferred over to the General Fund one-hundred.
That's my motion.
There isn't. I mean, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
Williams made the motion, and Janice Carter Beard the second.
No, I'm sorry, I was too quick. One more.
The other one is the Council District Two, increase of one-thousand-five-hundred dollars for travel, conference travel.
Okay. Now, that's my motion.
Second.
Okay. Counselman Lamar Marshall. Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Counselman Johnny Blunt.
What do we vote now?
On this motion, on this, on Mike's motion. Was that, was that a? Counselman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Counselman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Now, make a motion to approve the budget as amended. Good?
Second.
Counselman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Counselman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Counselman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Counselman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion is approved. We're ready for the next one?
Yes.
All right. Number five, final adoption of an ordinance providing for issuance and sale of not to exceed fifteen-million dollars of revenue bonds in one or more series of the City of Hammond, State of Louisiana, prescribing the form, fixing the parameters thereof, and providing for the rights of owners thereof, providing for the payment of such bonds and the application of the proceeds thereof, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Motion to approve.
Mr. President, can we get clarification from Andre based on Mr. Sandifer's request? Do you have an opinion on that, on the process?
Well, as I've told you all, I'm not the bond counsel on this, and, and bond, bond issuances are very procedurally important, and, and what the bond counsel has said is, you can have a dual process with approval of the bond ordinance and a call for the election. Whether you should do it or not is up to you all to vote. I would tell you, I don't think it's illegal, based upon what the bond counsel is saying. I'm not the bond counsel. I'm not hired to do that, and that's not what I do. They're saying that it's not illegal to do that, it can be parallel tracks.
Jim, Mr. Ryan, is Carmen still here?
Yeah, she's there.
Carmen, can you come weigh in on this? I apologize, but based on Mr. Sandifer, if you heard his objection to the process.
I did.
Can you give us an opinion on that?
There's no magic to the process, whether you do the bond ordinance now, or you do the bond ordinance later. Clearly, you cannot issue bonds until you've had an election pursuant to your charter. So there really is no rhyme or reason to the timing, other than it all has to get done, and it all has to get done for you to issue the bond.
My question is, is this ordinance legal? It's not the bond counsel.
It's not the bond counsel question, it's a city charter question. Is a ordinance, when it clearly doesn't give the, when it clearly doesn't give the authorization to pass a ordinance, legal?
The charter that talks about bonded debt, to me, this is a simple situation, that this is not the prudent way to do this.
I think Matt's, not to speak for Matt, but I think Matt's question really raises the issue, what's the proper order of process? Do you have the election first, and then you pass the ordinance? Or do the ordinance now and have the election second? That, that's a matter of process. I would tell you that the city cannot incur a bonded debt until its election, and the city cannot incur a bonded debt until it passes an ordinance. You have to do both. Whether you choose to do one now and one later, and one later and one now, is up to the council. And I, and I would defer to Carmen if, if, if your opinion's.
I mean, unfortunately, and I don't want to step on your toes, your charter doesn't lay out the exact process. I mean, it, it just, it's sort of unclear, but you're correct, you have to do both. So the order in which you choose to do it is, is really up to you. I think our goal in bringing it to you now was simply to allow us to move through this process quickly, if that's what you intend to do.
And I respectfully disagree.
A second.
So who was that first?
Councilman Marshall made the motion.
Question, please.
River motion.
Louise Fostick, 112 Elm Drive. Does this have to be a unanimous vote of the council?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Williams.
No.
What happened? Listen to the agreement.
Motion approved.